And welcome to the July 3, 2023, meeting of the Arlington County Planning Commission. I'm Jim Landtelme, a member of the commission. And before we do anything else, both the Planning Commission Chair and the Vice Chair are on excused absence tonight. As such, under the Planning Commission bylaws, Article 3, Section 4, the members present must nominate and vote on an acting chair for the meeting. Do we have a nomination? You're on mute. You're on mute.
Yes, I move to nominate Commissioner Landtelme as the temporary chair for tonight's meeting.
Second.
Seconded by Commissioner Bagley. We can now move ahead with a vote. Commissioner Bagley?
Aye.
Commissioner Jivara?
Aye.
Commissioner Burkey?
Aye.
Commissioner Sarly?
Aye.
Commissioner Streiner?
Aye.
Our new Commissioner Robertson.
Robertson, aye.
And online, Commissioner Weir.
Aye.
It's unanimous. I can now move ahead as acting chair. Very good. Tonight, the Planning Commission is having the first of two public hearings that are scheduled for this month. We will be hearing three items tonight. But first, note that the previously announced agenda item, the Bingham Center, has been postponed at the applicant's request to the September Planning Commission hearing. Staff will be reading a brief referral report. If you're here for that matter, we will not be discussing it tonight or at Thursday's meeting. On tonight's agenda, first will be zoning amendments to the Columbia Pike Form-Based Code. Second will be renovations in additions to the Barcroft Garden Apartments. And third will be consideration of the Arvis Site Plan application. Now, before we even get to that, I'd like to share a few logistical points for virtual participants and/or commissioners participating remotely. Tonight's meeting is available as a broadcast with closed captioning on Comcast Xfinity Channels 25 and 1085, Verizon FiOS Channels 39 and 40, and on the county website. Audio of tonight's meeting is available via phone. If commissioners, presenters, or speakers lose internet connectivity during tonight's meeting, please reconnect with us by phone. For other presenters and speakers joining us through Microsoft Teams, please keep your phones and devices muted until you're called upon. Please turn off sound to any other devices around you to minimize interference. And please keep your cameras off until the clerk calls you to speak. When called upon to speak, you must unmute yourself by clicking on the microphone icon that's located on your meeting command bar. The moderator does not have the ability to unmute you. Once you've spoken, please turn your camera off. If you're dialing in by phone, press *6 to unmute. Public speakers, you will be called upon by the clerk at an assigned time. Pre-registration to speak at tonight's hearing was required. We are not able to accommodate additional speakers. Speakers will have two minutes to comment as an individual and three minutes to comment as a representative of an organization or county board-appointed advisory group. A timer will be displayed on the screen when speaking virtually. Speakers in person will follow the timer on the podium. If you're dialing in by phone and unable to see the screen, we will provide an audible 30-second warning. You will be muted when your time has concluded. The meeting chat is active for presenters or commissioners who need technical assistance only. Please do not use the meeting chat for discussion, public comment, questions about agenda items, or requests for more information. All public comment must be shared verbally for the record during the assigned public testimony period. And lastly, this is a public forum. Tonight's meeting will be recorded and posted on the county's website. All information associated with tonight's meeting, whether written or spoken, is subject to the Virginia Freedom of Information requirements. And before we start on our agenda, I'd like to acknowledge and introduce the newest member to the Planning Commission, Commissioner Peter Robertson, right over there. Welcome. Madam Clerk, please call tonight's first item.
Our first item for the evening, as spoken, is for the Bingham Center Site Plan Application. It does have two parts, the site plan and the ordinance to vacate, but we will not be discussing this item, as mentioned earlier. We do have a report for deferral that will be read by Matt Pfeifer, our planning staff.
Okay, Mr. Pfeifer, it's yours.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman. My name is Matt Pfeifer with the Planning Division. Let's see, I'm just going to give a very brief presentation. So, the Bingham Center Site Plan and Vac-
Closer to your microphone.
Oh, sorry about that. The Bingham Center Site Plan and Vacation was requested by the developer to be deferred to the September Planning Commission and the County Board meetings, so staff is recommending deferral of both components. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Madam Clerk, the next item?
Item number two is ZOA-2023-0 and FBC-32. This is an ordinance to amend, reenact, and recodify parts of the Arlington County zoning ordinance. We have Clifton Hogan as our zoning staff to present this item.
Okay, staff is first up for this?
Excuse me, I'm sorry. I'm sorry, you all do still need to make a motion to accept the deferral for this, for item number one.
Oh, we have to make a, okay. Do I hear someone who'd like to make that motion?
Let's see, I need to double-check on this. I got a motion today for the vacation. Should we do that one first?
Speaking of the mic, I would do the site plan first and vacation second.
All right. Do you have that motion? One A. All right. There's the recommendation. I'll make sure I'm doing the right one. Okay. I move that the Planning Commission recommended the county board defer on subject site plan SPLN 21-00009, SP number 467, to the September 23, 2023 County Board Meeting.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Burkey. Just go ahead and vote on that. Commissioner Bagley?
Aye.
Commissioner Jivara?
Aye.
Mr. Burkey?
Aye.
Commissioner Sarly?
Aye.
Commissioner Streiner?
Aye.
And Commissioner Robertson?
Aye.
Commissioner Weir?
Aye.
And I vote aye as well. It's unanimous. Do we have a second motion?
I do. I move that the Planning Commission recommended the county board to defer the subject vacations associated with SPLN 21-00009, SP number 467, to the September 23, 2023 County Board Meeting.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Commissioner Streiner? And we'll take the vote now. Commissioner Bagley?
Aye.
Commissioner Jivara?
Aye.
Commissioner Burkey?
Aye.
Commissioner Sarly?
Aye.
Commissioner Streiner?
Aye.
Commissioner Robertson?
Aye.
Commissioner Weir?
Aye.
And I vote aye as well. It's unanimous. We can move on to the next item.
Mr. Hogan? That's all right, you got it.
The light's on.
Hi, my name's Cliff Hogan. I'm with the Planning Division, and I'm here to present for some zoning text amendments to do some technical corrections and updates to the zoning ordinance. There's three. One is to update our zoning regulations for telecom facilities to conform with the Code of Virginia. The second one is a minor technical correction for fence encroachments on corner lots. And the third is a correction to the regulating plan in the Form-Based Code for the Town Center portion of the Columbia Pike Form-Based Code. So, as far as the telecom facilities, this is basically to accommodate changes to the Code of Virginia that were adopted in 2017 that basically established criteria for telecom facilities to, on how localities can regulate their telecom facilities through their local zoning ordinances. There were pretty much two main portions of that. One was it established a type of project called an administrative review eligible project, and then it further prohibited localities from requiring special exceptions or variances or any other kind of special conditional use permit for administrative eligible projects. There's also some criteria for small cell facilities and to, like, providing some application administration guidelines, such as setting fees, review timelines, and so forth. This was a new development prior to this. The Code of Virginia was silent about telecom facilities. And as such, our current zoning ordinance, basically telecommunications facilities are a, they're a use that is allowed, is treated as a type of utility. It's allowed in every zoning district, but in every case, it requires approval of a use permit by the county board. So, and as far as what an administrative eligible review project is, it is essentially any telecom facility that's co-locating on an existing facility, or it's a new telecom structure that is less than 50 feet above ground level when it is not more than 10 feet above an existing utility pole within 500 feet of the right-of-way where it's located. It's not within a historic district, and it's not designed to support small cell facilities. And then, a small cell facility is essentially an antenna that occupies less than six cubic feet in area, or a facility with cumulative, with multiple small cell antennas that occupies a cumulative volume of 28 square cubic feet or less. So, as I mentioned, these regulations have been in effect since 2017. So, since July 1, 2017, the zoning division has been issuing telecommunications permits. These are essentially administrative permits that we issue for administrative review eligible projects. And again, it's only for these administratively eligible projects. And any projects that don't meet that, again, have to follow the county's procedure for, like, getting a use permit approval, or if there's already an existing use permit, then they would need to do an administrative change. And what the text amendment for the telecommunications facility is proposing, it's amendments to all of the use tables to identify small cell and micro wireless facilities as a byright use in all zoning districts, creating a use standard for telecommunications facilities to indicate when a project does or does not need to obtain a use permit, adding some definitions from the Code of Virginia to define small cell, micro wireless, and wireless facilities, and then some minor edits to the use categories that we use to define when a project is a utility versus a telecom, and so forth. All these amendments will basically reflect the telecommunications permitting process that's, again, been in place since 2017. The next, the technical correction, this is just a minor text amendment to our regulations for fence encroachments on corner lots. In March of this past year, there were amendments to, well, many portions of zoning ordinance, but one of them was the encroachment allowances for fences and walls to accommodate parks and stormwater management facilities. And at that time, the requirement that on corner lots that have, corner lots are essentially allowed a six-foot fence in their, which is normally prohibited portion of the yard, but it still needs to be three feet from the street right-of-way. That provision was struck inadvertently when this amendment happened in March, and this is basically to restore that requirement, which has been longstanding in the zoning ordinance. Yeah. And the last one, again, is just to correct the building restriction line on the Town Center Regulating Plan and the Form-Based Code. Essentially, there is a required building line, which is running co-terminals with the district line, as well as lot lines, and this conflicts with the requirement that Form-Based Code projects be, have a rear setback of at least 12 feet. So, as opposed to being built to that line. So, this amendment would, again, remove that line from the regulating plan. And and this was the, the regulating plan amendment was done by Olivia Sontag, who is a co-author on this report, and this is the community outreach that she has done for just the regulating plan. And I'm happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. Before we get to that, Madam Clerk, do we have any public speakers on this?
We do not.
Do we have any other commissions who wish to speak or address this?
I guess I'll just make a quick comment. This did not come in front of Zoko, because this is part of the ongoing sort of corrections and amendments, and there's not much to discuss. So, this comes straight here, just so we can vote on it and pass it on to the PC. I mean, the county board.
And was there Advisory Working Group report on this, other than what Commissioner Weir forwarded to us earlier today?
No, just what I forwarded earlier, the AUG heard this, and it was extremely uncontroversial. I mean, we don't want buildings to be required to be built right up to the lot line. And I'll say that the, I'll just note again that the AUG only heard the third of these three amendments, the RBL amendment. It did not hear the other, the other two.
Okay, thank you. The item is now before the commission. Does anybody have any questions for staff or any comments? Okay, do we have a motion?
All right, I will make a motion then. Let me make sure I pull the right one. Let's see, I recommend that the Planning, no. How's it go again? Aye?
I move that-
I move, thank you. I move that the Planning Commission recommended the county board adopt the attached ordinance to amend, reenact, and recodify the Arlington County zoning code, Articles 3, 4, 5, 6, 7, 8, 11, 12, and 18, Section 3 of the Appendix A, Columbia Pike Special Revitalization District Form-Based Code, 2, 1, update zoning regulations for telecommunications and wireless facilities to conform with the Code of Virginia, 2, correct the technical error relating to fence and wall encroachment on corner lots, and 3, correct the erroneous required building line on the Town Center Regulating Plan.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Commissioner Streiner? We can now move it. Any further discussion on this? Ready for vote? Commissioner Bagley?
Aye.
Commissioner Jivara?
Aye.
Commissioner Burkey?
Aye.
Commissioner Sarly?
Aye.
Commissioner Streiner?
Aye.
Commissioner Robertson?
Aye.
Commissioner Weir?
Aye.
And I vote aye as well. It's unanimous. Thank you. Let's now move on to the second item, Madam Clerk.
Okay. Item number three is FBCN 23-00002. This is for the renovation in additions to the existing garden apartment buildings known as the Barcroft Apartments. We have our planning staff, Olivia Sontag, to present this item this evening.
Thank you, Ms. Conde. It's all yours.
Thank you. Just a second to share my screen. All right, so this is a neighborhood's Form-Based Code use permit for Barcroft for renovations to a portion of Section 3. Joining me this evening are Mark McCauley from AED, and then Melissa Danowski from Housing. And I'm actually going to pass it off to Melissa first to just give you guys an update or some background on Barcroft and an update on the status of the MFDP.
Can you talk a little closer to your microphone?
Thank you. All right, Melissa?
Thank you, Olivia. So, I'm Melissa Danowski, the county project coordinator for Barcroft. And as Olivia mentioned, I will be providing a brief refresher on the background of the acquisition and some other general updates before turning it back to her for the rest of the staff presentation. As you may recall, back in December 2021, Jire Lynch purchased Barcroft Apartments with the assistance of $150 million loan from the county and $160 million loan from Amazon. Units were restricted up to 60% area median income, or AMI, for 99 years, which is the longest affordability term in the county's portfolio to date. Since the time of acquisition, the Jire Lynch team had worked on a master financing and development plan, which was submitted to the county on October 29, 2022. The Master Financing and Development Plan, or MFDP for short, is a high-level overview of some of their proposed planning, land use, and affordability concepts. Next slide. So, county staff is now in the process of reviewing the MFDP and long-term planning concepts that will go through a public engagement process and ultimately county board consideration, which is anticipated for late 2023 or early 2024. And as county staff and Jire Lynch continue to work on long-term planning for the site, Jire Lynch has agreed to move forward with advancing an initial renovation project of 93 homes at Barcroft Apartments. This will allow Jire Lynch to be able to deliver renovated, upgraded homes for existing Barcroft residents while providing enough time for Arlington County staff and Jire Lynch to continue to work on the long-term planning and recommendations. For the initial renovation project, Jire Lynch is considering buildings that are part of the existing Neighborhoods Form-Based Code conservation area and are not envisioned by either the county or Jire Lynch for redevelopment, regardless of the ultimate plans for the overall property. Next slide, thanks. In terms of the resident notification and tenant onsite relocation process, Jire Lynch remains committed to a resident-first approach. All details about the relocation plan and the renovation's impact on existing residents will be communicated to residents early, often, and in a variety of ways. And an in-person resident meeting was held on April 24 to inform the impacted residents and answer questions, and translation was provided. Per the county's relocation guidelines, the Jire Lynch team will be required to complete a tenant relocation plan before any planned renovation work. And residents may need to be temporarily accommodated on the property while the work to renovate and upgrade their home is completed. On-site relocation services will be provided by Jire Lynch at no cost to the residents. And in all cases, the Gates Hudson's property management team and the Jire Lynch team will ensure information is shared with residents to give them time to fully prepare for any disruption, including a 120-day notice. And they will provide one-on-one attention to address specific resident requests and concerns. So that, I'll turn it back over to Olivia to go over the rest of the staff presentation.
All right, thank you, Melissa. And Melissa will stay on if there are any follow-up questions for her about tenant relocation or the status of any of that. So, large property, but the item before you this evening is focused on that Section 3, and actually just a portion of Section 3. There are five buildings, Buildings Number 22 through 26, that are being proposed to be preserved, renovated, and then there are additions proposed to three of those buildings. And then the other element of this is a request for modifications to Form-Based Code requirements for parking and setbacks. So, just a quick overview of the zoning. The property is owned RA 1426. It's a multiple-family dwelling district. But again, it's also part of the Columbia Pike Neighborhoods Form-Based Code. As far as the GLUP, it's designated low-medium residential, and again, has a note for that Columbia Pike Neighborhood Special Revitalization District. And then over here, you can see the existing imagery and where the boundary of the subject property lies. So, I'll just give a very light overview, because the applicant has a presentation prepared. But here on screen, you can see where these existing, or the proposed additions are. The unit count does remain at 93. They're not increasing the overall unit count, but some, 14 of those units become three-bedroom units, and then four of the units will become four-bedroom units, so adding some family-sized units to the, to this section. It also includes building renovations, which the applicant will cover, some landscape and site improvements, National Green Building Standard Silver Level Certification. And again, as Melissa explained, 93 committed affordable units at about an average of 60% AMI for 99 years. So, this is within the Neighborhoods Form-Based Code. So, there are several specific aspects of this project that we reviewed. This is within the conservation area boundaries, which requires it to comply with the conservation area standards and go through review by the HLRB. It also contains a designated natural preserve area, which the applicant has preserved. You can kind of see the general outline of that area in this blue area here, which are, all of these trees shown are within that natural preserve area and are being preserved. And then the other element, again, are those modifications to parking and to setbacks. The applicant's proposing to preserve all existing parking onsite, including spaces within two of the structured garage bays. So, additional considerations for review of this project are the ongoing South George Mason Drive study. So, the kind of continued efforts to plan that will inform future kind of street and streetscape improvements along the perimeter, along South George Mason Drive, along this property. The other element that's still in development is the Master Financing and Development Plan, which will inform the project, additional community engagement that's planned for later this year and early next year. And again, all of those other site-wide improvements and streetscape improvements that will occur in a future process. So, this item was reviewed by the Form-Based Code Advisory Working Group twice, once in April, and then again in June. It also went to the Design Review Committee and the HLRB twice for review, and the applicant will kind of give a summary of those meetings. And then, we plan to go to Housing Commission this Thursday, and then County Board Meeting in July. So, with that, I will pass it off to the applicant for their presentation.
Thank you. The applicant, go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Landtelme. Just a moment while we get our screen up. Hi, good evening, everyone. I'm Lauren Riley with Walsh Colucci, and we represent the applicant in this case, Jire Lynch Real Estate Partners. I'm joined tonight in person by Alice Hagaman with Jire Lynch, and Jeff Krebs with FICA is joining us as well. And I believe other members from our design team are online as well. And we're here tonight to give you a brief introduction overview of our Form-Based Code use permit for this first phase of, first renovation phase of Barcroft. Next slide. I think Ms. Danowski covered the background pretty well here, so I won't belabor it. But while the, while Jire Lynch and the county continue to work on that Master Financing and Development Plan for the future redevelopment of Barcroft, Jire Lynch is eager to get started on renovating some of these existing apartment buildings and upgrading the units for their existing residents. And so, we're very excited to bring- And so, we're very excited to bring before you today this first renovation project, which is not only going to provide necessary site and building improvements like in-unit washer-dryers, new appliances, upgraded stormwater, it's also going to provide additional family-sized units, which is much needed in this area. Next slide. Just to orient, there we go, a little bit of delay. Just to orient everyone to where the project is, this is a overview of the Columbia Pike Corridor, and you can see the entirety of the Barcroft site there outlined in blue. Much of it is located within the Neighborhoods Form-Based Code, then a small portion of it there on the west side is located within the Commercial Centers Form-Based Code. Next slide. And then just a brief bit about the history of the Barcroft site. This area is historically significant because these existing 59 buildings were constructed in the 1940s and the 1950s, both during and after World War II, in order to relieve housing shortages in the Northern Virginia region. And all of these buildings are good examples of mid-20th century garden apartment design, which are designed in a more simplified colonial revival style. And the entirety of Barcroft has developed into two phases. So the first phase, which is where our project site is, was started development in the 1940s. And you know, some notable design elements of that phase are brick exterior walls, slate roofs, and some ornamented entry surrounds. And then Phase 2 came a little bit later, in the 1940s and the early 1950s, and it had a more modified garden apartment style, it had larger parking areas, smaller landscaped courtyards, and it had more simplified entry surrounds. Then here you can see how the history of Barcroft is reflected in the Neighborhoods Form-Based Code. This is the Neighborhoods Code Central Subarea Regulating Plan, which contains much of Barcroft, again, outlined in blue there. You'll see some of the site on the west and the north there shaded in that light blue color, that's where redevelopment's currently anticipated in this regulating plan. And then you'll see the remainder, much of the Barcroft site is in that light green shaded area, which is known as the Conservation Area, where buildings and existing mature tree canopy are anticipated to be preserved. And the Conservation Area within the Neighborhoods Code was not only created in order to preserve existing affordable housing and tree canopy, it was also created to incentivize additional affordable housing by allowing additional density for projects that preserve historic features or traditional design elements. Next slide. Then here you can see how the project site maps there onto the Conservation Area and the regulating plan. The project sites on the corner there, at South 4 Mile Run Drive and South George Mason Drive, as Ms. Sontag pointed out, it's five buildings with 93 units today, and then that mature tree canopy area as well. In this site, all five buildings are located wholly within the Conservation Area. They're not anticipated to be redeveloped either by the Form-Based Code or by the Master Financing Development Plan, and so that's what makes this site a really good one to kick off our first renovation phase of Barcroft. Next slide. And for buildings and areas that are located within the Conservation Area, the Form-Based Code does allow certain improvements. It allows building renovations, it allows building additions, as well as landscaping and site improvements. And all of these improvements and changes must comply with the Conservation Area standards in Part 7 of the code. And these are all modeled after the U.S. Secretary of Interior Standards for Rehabilitation. So in conformance with those Neighborhood Form-Based Code regulations, the applicant requests to renovate the exterior of these five buildings, which I'll go over in just a moment, as well as construct additions on three of these buildings, those are those blue boxes there on the backs of those buildings. And these additions are intended to create more family-sized units, which has been encouraged by county staff. Today, there are 93 units across these buildings, but they're all one- and two-bedroom units. And so with these additions, the applicant is able to convert several of its two-bedroom units into three- and four-bedroom units to serve families in this area. With this application, the applicant will also provide all 93 units as committed affordable housing units. And lastly, you'll see, it might be hard to see on this slide, a small green shaded area there behind Building 22. The applicant also proposes a new landscape courtyard behind that building to provide additional gathering space for its residents. Next slide. And here's an illustrative image of what that courtyard might look like. It consists of an elevated decking structure that will mitigate any interference with existing roots below, that provides quite a bit of seating area, outdoor grilling space, will also be planting some understory trees there. And then speaking of trees on the rest of the site, the applicant will be planting a good number of trees across the whole site in order to mitigate the loss of trees that are impacted by the building additions and site improvements, trees that are dying or invasive trees that need to be removed. Next slide. And here you can see the massing of those proposed additions on the top-left image. You can see how they relate to the existing buildings. In order to honor the historic buildings, we place all of the additions on the rear elevations there. And through these renderings, you can see what those start to look like and how they interact with the existing buildings. Next slide. Here's some more detailed elevations of those three additions, and the architecture that you see here is a result of several meetings that the applicant has had over the past couple of months with the Historic Affairs and Landmark Review Board and its Design Review Committee. We discussed the brick colors, window patterns, we discussed vent sizes, you know, everything you could think of on these additions, and we've refined the design and the HLRB, the DRC support, the proposed architectures, it's historically compatible with the existing buildings. Next slide. And we also discussed the exterior renovations with the HLRB and the DRC. With this application, the applicant will be repairing and repointing brick where it's needed, they'll also be repairing portions of the slate roofs that need it, as well as replacing exterior light fixtures with other light fixtures that are historically compatible with the buildings. And then they'll also, as part of the interior upgrades, they'll be replacing those older heating and air systems with newer systems. And so as you can see where the numbers three and four are, they're on the front facades, some of those vents are going to come out, and those areas will be patched with brick to match the existing or salvaged brick from the rear. But because of these new systems, we also need new wall openings for ventilation. So we've requested a modification in the Conservation Area standards to allow for those new wall openings, but to respect these historic facades, we've placed all of the new wall openings on the rear elevations. Next slide. And then in terms of modifications, we'll also be requesting a modification in the Conservation Area standards to allow those basement windows, which is where the number six is on your screen, to be replaced with vinyl windows. The prior owner to Jire Lynch had replaced all but the basement windows on these buildings with vinyl, and so we've requested that modification to allow us to do the same so that the new windows will match the same on the existing building. And then lastly, because this renovation project will be financed by Virginia Housing Tax Credit Financing, the buildings have to comply with the Virginia Housing Minimum Design and Construction requirements. And those require canopies at all of the residential entrances, and it also requires cladding of any exterior wood trim with vinyl or aluminum material. Now, we understand that this is not historically appropriate for these buildings, and so Jire Lynch will be requesting a waiver from Virginia Housing for these requirements. Fortunately, we won't know the outcome of that waiver until this fall, and so that's why we've included those items in this use permit application. Next slide. And then you can see how those two elements might look. On the facades, the cladding of the exterior wood trim would only occur on the fascia boards at the top of the building, as well as the wooden entry surrounds. And then on your right, you can see the preferred canopy design option that we've discussed with the HLRB and the DRC. You know, if required, these will all be provided at all residential entrances on the front and the back of the buildings. Next slide. Then here's a summary of all the requests that we've gone over today. We filed our Form-Based Code Use Permit that allows the renovation of the existing buildings, the proposed additions, as well as those landscape and site improvements. As Ms. Sontag mentioned, we're requesting a modification to permit the existing parking and setbacks for those buildings to remain as they are today. And then we're also requesting those modification of the Conservation Area standards to permit the new wall openings and the vinyl window replacements, as well as those Virginia Housing requirements as well. Next slide. Then that concludes our presentations. Thank you for your time, and we're available for any questions.
Thank you very much. Madam Clerk, do we have any public speakers on this?
No, we do not, thank you.
Thank you. Do we have any other commissions that want to speak up on this? Okay. In addition to what you provided earlier, is there anything further for the Aug report? Commissioner Weir?
Nope, the Aug was very supportive of the proposal.
Thank you, and this item is now before the commission. Anybody have any questions for staff or the applicant? Yes, Commissioner Bagley? You can go ahead.
I just have one quick question on the outdoor courtyard. I saw in small type ADA compliant, but I saw the steps, how does somebody who is not able to do the steps, how do they get up there?
Yes, I'll let Jeff answer that, but I think there might have been an error on our graphic. The left side of that courtyard is ADA compliant, we can't make the right side of it compliant due to the retaining wall and the stairs, but Jeff, do you want to elaborate?
That is kind of the highlight. An ADA parking space would be in that parking space, the parking area you could see on the left-hand side, that's the place that we'd be able to get in level to an upper part of the terrace. The existing one's down about six feet below that grade, and so we're basically allowing folks to get into the upper area, and then those who are able would go down a set of steps to the lower area as well. So trying to accommodate everybody in the same space.
And we would have the same features on both floors, so grills, picnic tables, everything that's on the lower level would also be on the upper level as well.
Commissioner Burkey?
Yeah, maybe I'm missing something. Is there, and I'll confess, I'm pretty familiar with the site, I live about maybe half a mile away. So that block on George Mason, as well as 4 Mile, it's not a super steep grade where you're talking about, but there are steps up. Are we going to be making any site improvements at this point to allow accessibility from the sidewalks or existing conditions remaining?
Thank you for that. Due to the grade, the applicant team has studied opportunities for making these buildings more accessible, and due to that steep topography, both in the back and in the front of the property, we're not able to make any of those units ADA accessible, though that is a priority for the team as they look across the entire site as a whole to upgrade units to be ADA accessible where we can make them.
Okay. Commissioner Sarley?
So that was the question. I am not very familiar with the interior of the building in particular, so I'm assuming that the sort of building core does not have elevators? And then how are we addressing ADA issues and compliance with the entire structure?
Yeah, so there's no elevators, and in addition, when you walk in the main entrance, it's immediately a split foyer, so it's not, you know, there's not even room for a wheelchair lift. So unfortunately, to Lauren's point, we won't be able to accommodate ADA units in this specific section. Instead, we'll be looking, as we renovate the rest of the site, we'll be looking to make modifications that work with not only the topography, but you know, existing exterior entrances and things to create those accessible units.
Thank you. I would encourage, like, as much as universal design, you can still implement here, you know, not everyone's ADA is a wheelchair, sort of, what's the politically correct term? My wife is always correcting me this. But you know what I mean, like, there's different sort of issues that can, so visibility, you know, acoustic, and so on and so forth. So you know, as much as you can make it universal design, I strongly encourage that.
Yes, and we are looking to include a few modifications for visual impairments and auditory impairments as well.
Other question, Commissioner Striner?
Yeah, first off, I do want to second what my fellow commissioner was saying about the ADA accessibility. I think if you're going to go to all this trouble to renovate all these properties, it's important that everybody can, anybody can live in them. So first question, of the 93 committed affordable units, I know, stop me if this question is worded in a weird way, so it's going to be an average of 60% AMI. What is that average right now?
I think Jire Lynch is committed to the average 60%. We're still working on that percent, which buildings will be, you know, in between 30% or 60% with county staff.
Gotcha, yeah. My question is, is I just want to make sure that that 60% is not an increase from what it is right now. So if it's, if right now, its average is out to be about 50% across all the board, I don't want it to be making it less affordable.
Yeah, I'm sorry, I can't give you the definitive answer right now, but we are working on that with county staff, and we'll make sure we find that out.
And then, since Commissioner Guerin is not here, I feel obliged to ask about the trees. Is there, I know you mentioned that there's the potential tree loss happening in other parts of the property. Is there a way to prevent that? Just, is there a way to prevent that sort of tree loss from happening in the first place?
Yes, and I'll let Jeff pipe up with the, and go over our tree exhibit, get the one we got from each other.
Yeah, I think the short answer is that we, as a development team, feel very strongly that one of the most compelling components of the Barcroft property is this mature canopy, right? And it's, we believe it's in everyone's best interest to maintain that to the extent that we can. The graphic that we're trying to find, the colorful graphic that you saw earlier, indicates trees that are being removed only for, due to construction impacts. In other words, if the footprint of the addition lands where a tree is, it's going to have to come out. Or if there is trenching to provide the required storm drainage, right? One of the Virginia Housing requirements is to capture all the downspouts, right? So currently, there is none of that, and so all the water goes overland, resulting in a lot of erosion. So we're capturing all those downspouts as part of the stormwater management sort of strategy. One of the things that will happen, though, is as we capture those downspouts, we have to take them somewhere, right, and connect them to the storm drain, so there would be some trenching. So the trees, and there are very few actually, if you look at this, this particular graphic when it comes up, we're removing, I think there are 16 that are coming out due specifically to construction impacts. There are a few that are invasive that we're also removing at county request, and then there are a couple that are just dead that we're taking out. So we, I guess all I'm trying to say is we certainly, globally as we look at this, we're committed to preserving the trees that we can. There are some realities to construction process that will inevitably result in some canopy loss, but we really do strongly hope to minimize that. And beyond that, I think I would just say that we're committed to planting, and certainly with this first phase, we're planting far in excess of the amount that we're required to provide, you know, due to those replacements. So I think we're doing what we can to help maintain and to ensure that there would be a future canopy at Barcroft as we go down the road.
Thank you. I think Commissioner Guerin would be happy with that.
Thank you, Commissioner Striner. Yes?
Hi, thank you, just a question about planting trees. If I remember correctly, because of the number you're taking down, you're supposed to be planting 39, but you're actually planting 71, is that correct? Okay, just trying to remember from what I read.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Thank you. Other questions? Yes, Commissioner Burkey?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I want to revisit the income averaging. Thank you, Commissioner Striner, for bringing that up. I think this question is for Ms. Danowski, good to see you. So I understand, and this has been sort of the intent from the applicant for a while, to look at income averaging for the affordable housing commitment. There's some language on page 40 of the staff report that speaks to these units being no greater than 30% AMI, but my understanding is we're looking at 60% AMI. Probably missing something, can you just walk me through that language? It's on page 40.
Yeah, yes. Let me just get to it, I believe, excuse me one second.
Putting me on the spot here, sorry about that.
Yeah, no, it is, it is a good question. Roll to it to make sure I get it right.
Let me see if I can pull it up here.
Okay, okay, so. So it's, the language is, the developer agrees that the affordable rents of the CAF unit shall not exceed 30% of the AMI level.
Okay.
60% was crossed out because we are exploring the income averaging tool. So it's that the developer agrees that the affordable rent of the CAF unit shall not exceed 30% of that AMI level, as published by HUD. So if the rent is at 50% AMI, if the AMI levels for that unit is determined to be 50% AMI, the developer agrees that the affordable rent for that CAF unit shall not exceed 30% of 50% AMI in that case.
I think I follow. I don't know if I follow.
Yeah, it's about the rents. So think of it, if you have, again, a 50% AMI unit, then you're saying that the rent for that 50% AMI unit shall not exceed 30% of that rent.
Okay, okay. I don't want to belabor the point. We can revisit. I was just curious, but we can talk offline. I did have another question, if that's all right, Mr. Chair. I want to go back to parking real quick. This may have been covered, so if so, I apologize. What is the default parking requirement that we're backing away from with the request?
The required parking ratio in the RA 1426 district where we're located is a 1.125 space per unit. And I think that would require 92 parking spaces, and we have 86 on-site.
Okay, thank you.
So HALRB is comfortable with the proposed modifications changes that would bring it in order to comply with the affordable housing rules?
Yes, I think Lauren Ferris might be online as well to summarize their input, but they were comfortable with the modifications that we requested for Virginia Housing. They understand that they're required, and we worked with them on the canopy design options, to pick one that they were also comfortable with. And I think they'll be writing a letter to support our waiver request of Virginia Housing.
Great, thank you. I will say that I am pleased that something has come before so quickly from the new owners, from when they took over, it was just a year and a half ago. You know, it was quite stunningly good news when that, when we heard that, but I'm always a little skeptical about when something will actually happen. This is like record time to get something actually being built. I know there's a lot more to go, and there's a lot more planning that has to be done, and that's appropriate. But to get out of the gate this quickly, thank you. This is good news. These are a good number of, you know, between the renovations and the expansion of desperately needed larger units, this is a good thing. So I just want to put that on the record. Thank you.
Thank you, and thanks to staff for working with us to bring this forward as quickly as we can.
I know, this is a county priority. You know, we fully are supportive of that. Any other questions, comments? Yes, Commissioner Robertson?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The number, the ratio replacement of trees, 71 to 39, is impressive. Do you know what the caliper inch replacement is? You know, small trees don't provide the same ecological value that large ones do.
That's correct. The county standard is two and a half to three and a half inches, roughly. So for the canopy trees, that's what our intent would be. The smaller under-story ornamental trees usually fall a little bit below that. But again, that's county standard. We'll certainly do what we can. It will, due to the number, largely depend on what we can find in the industry, but that is the intent.
Commissioner Sarly?
So I would like to associate myself with Commissioner Lonellme sentiment. I think we are indeed very supportive and very excited to see this project coming through. I did have a quick question, just for clarification. So the additions to the existing structure will be essentially programmatically attached to apartments, right? Those are not the cores of the building, which kind of goes back to my original question. So everything, access to the second floor is essentially stairs, and those are to remain as they are currently?
That's right. The core of the buildings will remain the same. What we're able to do with the additions is create additional bedrooms where the existing living rooms are, and those additions are the new living rooms for those units.
Thank you.
A little late, but I was going to say, here's a floor plan showing it, this is showing sort of a typical three-bedroom bump out on the right side and a typical four-bedroom on the left side. And you can see, so the stairwell, the core is the same, and it's just expanding the units to, as Lauren mentioned, those living rooms there.
It didn't come up, and I'm sorry. I will, oh, there it is. I'll put a plug in for staff to include plans on their reports. Those are always fun. For me, I don't know if the other commissioners totally enjoy them, but they're very informative. So thank you.
Yeah, I like the idea of bump outs. I've seen them be done on other of our older buildings. There's some apartments that are just north of Columbia Pike, a long 4-mile run where that was done a few years ago, and they look like they were always there. When I'd bike by, I'd see them being built, and now that they're finished, they're finished quite a while ago, but they fit very, very well with the existing buildings there. They're very consistent. You still have the open space. These are guard apartments also. So I'm very, very supportive of this type of increase in size or increase in units to existing buildings. I think it's a great idea, so thank you. Do we have any other comments?
Commissioner Weir?
Oh, Commissioner Weir?
Thank you. I want to follow up on the question about tree size. My understanding, and this is as good as any opportunity to get it confirmed, is that once upon a time, county required slightly larger and older trees, and that the standard has been adjusted in recent years to smaller, younger trees that are currently, that we currently see planted in projects in large part because of the survivability rate of the younger trees being greater than the older trees. Is that, is that correct? Or is it mostly correct or not correct? And can you please fill me in on the details if not? Thank you.
Happy to, yes. That is largely correct. The standard used to be about four to four and a half inches, but primarily for street trees. What industry research has shown over time is that smaller trees actually tend to catch up to their larger, a tree planted that was slightly larger planted at the same time, the younger ones actually catch up, are healthier, and then ultimately grow a little bit faster than the large trees that are implanted. Part of the other problem is, if you plant a great big caliper tree, it has a gigantic root ball. And so as it relates to street trees, it's very difficult to fit those into the proposed street tree dimensions of our tree pits. So what we found is that the smaller trees, and staff has agreed, according, as you saw, it's been, the installation size has been reduced accordingly, but you still get a very sizable tree at the outset. So you have some presence from the landscape, but that is, that is correct.
So the requirement that I had in mind is for street trees. Is there a requirement in place for trees where you don't have that root ball limitation like this? Or, thank you, by the way, for the clarification, for that clarification. Is there a separate requirement for non-street trees?
No, the current landscape guidelines do not distinguish between public and private. I just know that the conversations that we've had with urban forestry, and there is specificity within the guidelines talking about street trees, but it has been broadly applied to all of the landscape trees to be installed. So there is no specificity.
Very informative. That's very informative. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Commissioner Weir. Okay, do we have any other comments or questions? Yes, Commissioner Guevara?
Just a comment. I want to associate myself also with the comments Commissioner Lonellme and Commissioner Sarly mentioned about how pleased I am to see this project. I grew up down the street from this. A lot of my friends actually lived there, and so it needed to be done back then for them to be renovated. The fact that it's at least happening now, it makes me really happy to see. So thank you for all the work.
Okay, are we ready for a motion?
I'll make a motion. I move that the Planning Commission recommend that the County Board approve the subject use permit in accordance with the Columbia Pike Neighborhoods Form-Based Code, Article 11.2 of the Zoning Ordinance, Appendix B, for preservation, renovations, and additions to the Barcroft Apartments Buildings Number 22 through 26, located within Section 3 of the overall apartment complex, with modifications pursuant to the Columbia Pike Neighborhoods Form-Based Code for Set Pack and parking requirements associated with the existing buildings to remain, subject to the conditions of the staff report.
Thank you. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second, Commissioner Sarly.
I think Commissioner Weir might have beat me to the punch.
Might have been first, one or the other. Okay, I'll give it to Commissioner Weir. Thank you. Do we have any further comments, discussion?
I just have one comment. I think this is wonderful. I'd associate myself with all the comments we've had up here. This is sorely needed. This is a very modest proposal that will provide a lot of needed affordable housing. We're preserving affordable housing, but needed space. Really excited to see what you folks do in the next couple of years. So really appreciate this. Thank you.
Okay, let's move on to a vote. Commissioner Bagley?
Aye.
Commissioner Guevara?
Aye.
Commissioner Burkey?
Aye.
Commissioner Sarly?
Aye.
Commissioner Striner?
Aye.
Commissioner Robinson?
Aye.
Commissioner Weir?
Aye.
And I vote aye as well. The ayes have it, unanimous. Thank you very much. Madam Clerk, can we move on to our final item?
Our final item for this evening is the consideration of the following actions for the ARVA site plan application. That would be for A, a general land use plan amendment, GP-352-21-1; B, a rezoning, REZN22-00004; and the site plan, SPLN22-00006. We have Peter Schultz, our planning staff, to present this item. We can give him a few moments to set up. Thank you.
Okay, Mr. Schultz, it's yours when you're ready.
I'm Peter Schultz. I'm the planner for this particular project. With me is Jane Kim from the Department of Environmental Services to answer any questions. The existing conditions for the ARVA motel site plan, it's located at 2201 Arlington Boulevard. The existing use is 128-unit, two-to-three-story motel. Here, photos of the existing general land use plan and the zoning. As you can see, it has two different zoning districts, two different categories in the general land use plan. We'll be discussing what we'll be doing with the GLUP and zoning later. The summary of the requested actions is a requested GLUP change to the general land use plan from low, medium residential and service commercial to low office apartment hotel. A rezoning from C2 and RA 615 to CO 1.5, which is the corresponding zoning district to that low office apartment. And a new site plan for a residential mixed-use building. I'm not going to read all of this, but the developer is proposing a mixed-use residential building of 251 units, of approximately 3,000 square feet of retail or retail equivalent as permitted on the site. Zoning modifications requested include for additional retail density, additional residential density, additional, or change from the parking ratio, and modification to the signs, sign ordinance, as you'll see later. The policy guidance we've used for this site is the special GLUP study that was conducted in 2020 and 2021, and was before you in July, in June and July of 2021. The special GLUP study was adopted by the County Board in July 17, 2021, so therefore it is the controlling guidance for this site. It made many recommendations for the site. It did say that low office apartment hotel could be appropriate for this site with an appropriate site plan that met the key recommendations of the plan. Heights capped at eight stories or 90 feet, concentrated along Arlington Boulevard in the middle of the site, and then tapering down to neighboring areas. A public space of about 10% of the size of the site at the corner of Wayne Street and Irving Street, Pershing Drive, I'm sorry. And significant landscaping at the south and the east of the property, including in VDOT right-of-way. Remove an unneeded frontage road within VDOT right-of-way and replace with the landscaped and improved multi-use trail. Provide a through-block muse and connection as part of an internal driveway system, but that would also permit access to the public, walking and rolling, from North Wayne Street to that Arlington Boulevard trail. Architecture that honors mid-century modern and complements neighboring historic properties. On-site affordable housing was an expectation of this site plan of 20% of the difference in the floor area between the maximum density that could have been achieved and is proposed to be achieved. Preservation or recreation of the existing sign in the motel lobby at the corner of Pershing and Arlington Boulevard, and we'll see some of that. This was a schematic, potential redevelopment scenarios developed in the plan, and you'll see from the developer's plan presentation how the plan is well-conformant with this guidance of this site, with a couple modifications that we think actually improve the site overall. Project Evolution was a site layout. During our first SPRC, the SPRC was concerned about what would go around the future public open space. I'll discuss this a little later in the community benefits discussion, but this public open space was not designed during this process. So all pictures you see here are schematic. It will be a post-approval process led by the Department of Parks and Recreation, but with monetary and in-kind contributions by the developer. As you can see on the left, there is some blank space of this proposed building facing the proposed public space. At the second SPRC, the developer proposed a revised plan that increased the amount of windows, pulled back the row of townhouse loft-style units in order to create more usable public space. Those of you who attended the SPRC process, they had said that they would change this, and they indeed have, in their last approval, is that there had been, originally, as you can see here, on the southern end of the site, there's a group of townhouse-style units here. There would have been parking accessed by this shared muse, which also would be shared with bicycles and pedestrians. You can see the connection here to the Arlington Boulevard trail. Cars would come in and park in this south site. Staff had great concerns about that. The SPRC also had great concerns about that. So the developers revised the plan that, while I do not have a color rendering, there will be no parking in this southern stick of townhouse-style units. And so where you see this car, that's actually the turn in the internal driveway system, as the developer will probably show you in their presentation, ends here. So all car use ends a lot sooner than it would have, as you saw during the SPRC process. So all of this from east-west is going to be pedestrian and bicycles only to access the Arlington Boulevard trail that you see here. There were some other issues with landscaping. Here's the southern facade of the building, where there were proposed transformers, which created not only an area of no landscaping, but also blank walls facing what would have been Arlington Boulevard, and also the Arlington Boulevard multi-use trail. Already by the first SPRC, the developer had corrected that condition and created a landscaped area, moved the transformers to another more appropriate location under the sidewalks on Pershing Drive, and created a much better design situation here. Historic preservation was a big part of the discussion of the SPRC, and as you can see, there were big changes between the first and second SPRCs. The developer also worked with our historic preservation program and our urban designers to help come to a solution where, as you can see here in the top-right corner, the historic sign and lobby is more faithfully recreated. While the materials are too deteriorated to use, especially the sign, it just does not meet any code requirement today and is quite rusted through, they are recreating the historic sign as recommended in the special GLUP study, and recreating the historic lobby entrance, free of its 1980s renovations, as you might see there today. And also, it may not show up very well here. They will be reusing, to the extent they can. They will be reusing, to the extent they can, stone from the existing, stone cladding that is around the foundation of the existing lobby to bring it back to its mid-century splendor. Proposed features and amenities, the developer is, as part of the, to earn the additional density, according to Section 15.59, they will be designing, building, and maintaining the 10,000-square-foot public open space at the corner of North Wayne Street and North Pershing Drive. To the right, you see that anything is purely conceptual at this point, but working with the staff, we had developed a building around it that interacts well with the park, and staff is quite satisfied that it will seem open to the public and a public space, and with appropriate programming and design by the developer's consultants, who will be chosen co-with the Department of Parks and Recreation. Other proposed features and amenities, as called for in the special GLUP study, they will be an improved 12-foot-wide Arlington Boulevard mixed-use trail, what is right now a vestigial frontage road that no longer has any purpose. It was built only to service the motel. VDOT does not maintain it and disclaims any responsibility for it. They will, with VDOT's permission, and we have their agreement onsite with them, to remove Wayne Wright Road and to replace it with a 12-foot-wide Arlington Boulevard mixed-use trail and landscaped plaza at the corner, and as well as replacing the dead-and-dying Callie pear trees with a new row of, double row of trees on either side of the trail, and creating a multimobility hub here. While on the, there is already a Capital Bike Share Station across the street. There's, however, a bike fix-it station will be available here for bicyclists along the Arlington Boulevard mixed-use trail, and well, the possibility also for parking of micromobility devices. The developer is part of the features and amenities, again, as I stated before, recreating historic elements and reusing to the historic stone, as well as actually commemorative signage on the property, too. The signage, we don't know what exactly it will be. They will, similar to the Joyce Motorsite, work with our historic preservation program after approval to commemorate events at this, which actually turns out to be a rather historic site and a gateway to Arlington. There are also seven family-sized, two- and three-bedroom committed affordable units onsite. That was a strong recommendation of the, onsite affordable housing was a recommendation of the special GLUP study. The SPRC felt very strongly that the units should be family-sized, and so the developer was able to work with staff for seven two- and three-bedroom units. Other features include, there are going to be protected bike lanes on both sides of Pershing Drive in the frontage of the building. And sustainable design elements, they're going to follow the green building incentive program, bird-friendly glass, Energy Star, all of the basic, as you'll see in Condition 18 of our site plan conditions, the various Arlington baseline prerequisites to also earn additional density. We find that they're compliant with the county-adopted plans, including the special GLUP study, the master transportation plan, the housing, Arlington Housing Plan, the historic preservation master plan, and the community energy plan. Just to show you the public process schedule, this is just for the site plan only. As I stated before, the special GLUP study had a year-long process in 2020 and 2021, which culminated with the County Board approving the, adopting, I should say, the special GLUP study document as the guidance for the site and authorizing advertising of a GLUP change concurrent with the site plan, and that's what this is. So, therefore, the developer is asking for the, so should say, recommendation that the PC recommends, that the County Board adopt the resolution to approve the general land use plan amendment, the rezoning, and the concurrent site plan. And I'll be here, and Jane Kim from DES, if you have any questions. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Schultz. Is the applicant ready to present?
Yes, sir. Thank you very much. Ashton, are you available to bring our presentation up?
Yes, I am.
Wonderful. So, good evening, everybody. I'm Matt Roberts with the Herschler Law Firm, here tonight on behalf of the applicant. Here tonight with me, both in person and online, is Nan Patel with Arlington Boulevard LLC, Brian Arias with Studios Architecture. Ashton Allen is online with Studios Architecture, will be helping with the presentation, and various other of our team members from Land Design and Bowman Consulting are on the line as well. Thank you, first of all, very much to Jane and Peter and the other staff for helping to shepherd this project, as they always do. I think, you know, like very many of the other products I've brought through, you know, it's so much better for having gone through the process. We are here tonight and happy to be here with the unanimous support of the Housing Commission, Parks and Recreation Commission, and also the Transportation Commission. So, very quickly, you know, Peter's oriented you to the site, so I won't belabor the point, but we are talking about the Days Inn Motel that is at the corner of Pershing and Arlington Boulevard, really the sort of last component of the gateway into the Lion Park neighborhood. Next slide, please, Ashton. As Peter mentioned, you know, the applications that you have before you are really the outcome of the 2021 special GLUP study that the Board approved for this site. That special GLUP study gave us a lot of guidance in terms of what we should propose here today, and really looked towards mixed use on the site, you know, kind of gave us some open-ended criteria for that, but generally mixed use and trying to complete the gateway into this neighborhood, sort of completing what had happened across the street with 2201 Pershing several years earlier. And that guidance included a number of key goals and ultimately recommendations, focusing a lot largely on public spaces at this site, both, as Peter mentioned, transforming Wayne Wright Road to the southern extension of the Arlington Boulevard trail, creating a new onsite public open space in the form of a park. Again, talking a lot about completing that gateway into the neighborhood, not just architecturally, but also had that density and that height transitions to our neighbors and the neighboring surroundings. And last but not least, embracing some of that site history, really for us going back to the Arva Motel in 1955, when it was sort of first approved. It's had a lot of iterations since then, but that's really the one where we focused our time. Next slide, please, Ashton. And always a question of how you get there. So, our application does, in fact, track with the study. We are proposing a mixed-use development of the site, residential and retail, about 251 units, a little less than 3,000 square feet of retail use. And we'll be delivering, as Peter mentioned, a number of community benefits. Lead Gold Certification, the extension of the trail south along Pershing Drive, as I mentioned, with those micromobility features, which we're working out with DES, the off-site protected bike lanes, both on our side of Pershing Drive, but also completing that on the north side of Pershing Drive, where it isn't today, and then providing the onsite park, as well as ADUs. I do think that's a really critical element of this application, where you might see in comparable projects perhaps more units. We really stressed, and it was really stressed to us, to look at it, opportunities for onsite family units, and Nan, you know, felt very strongly about that as well. And so, the outcome is ultimately seven onsite units, but many of those in the three-bedroom and two-bedroom plus den category. So, really getting larger units than you might in a comparable project. So, with that, I'm going to turn it over to Ashton to walk you around the site, and then happy to take any questions that you might have.
Good evening. Thank you, Matt, and thank you, Peter, for a great introduction of the project. I'm going to move through a series of images that show the planning for the GLUP and then the design as it resulted. So, this is a view that you saw earlier of the corner of Pershing and Arlington Boulevard, floating above, that looks back at the project from the GLUP study, and then the design as it evolved, again, with Pershing Drive on the right and Arlington Boulevard on the left. The historic sign, as was mentioned, is brought forward with the elements of the lobby and, oops, goodness, the architecture down below. Zooming in, as Peter showed, there, here are these historic elements being brought forward, the sign, the wall, and the historic signs. Looking at the corner of Arlington Boulevard and Pershing, these are some of the micromobility hubs and the potential location with these fix-it stations, as Peter mentioned, bringing those forward again from the GLUP, working through where those actually end up on the site. This is a view looking across Pershing Drive. So, here, we're seeing on the left, you can see the corner of the historic sign, and on the right, the retail space that fronts the park, and in the center here is this drop-off court and the one vehicular connection point that passes through the site, where all vehicles, all vehicles operate. This is a view of the GLUP again from the corner of Wayne and Pershing, looking at that open space and the massing and the architecture as designed, as we drop down at that corner and see, you know, as Peter mentioned, the additional glass and the lower rise coming out and the park that will be designed in the future. This park, I think, as we've been developing the process, again, this is not a design, but merely an idea. We've really focused on the opportunity to enhance some of the biophilic features that are inherent in the neighborhood and that were embodied within that GLUP study, and carrying those forward as we start, or as the developer starts those meetings with the community. Also, we've been focused on how the streetscape is going to be improved, providing a minimum of six-foot sidewalks all around the site. The one spot on Pershing Drive that actually meets that six-foot is next to the park easement. So, if that wider sidewalk space that is inherent within the design is part of what that park wants to carry forward, that's fantastic. And then down on Wayne Street, totally transforming that street section today, which is very brief. This is the GLUP study. Again, we're now floating at Wayne, looking down this muse and this pass-through, as Peter mentioned, which now, once you get past a certain point within the design, is no more vehicles are welcome. Looking at the actual architecture, we have the park easement on the left, and we have, you could see the curve of vehicles as they turn under the building, and then this pass-through, which is only pedestrians and bicycles and wheels, as Peter called it. Do you want to take a moment to talk about some of the landscape-rich experience that's going to happen up on this building? This is within the 4.1 submission, but I know there have been a lot of questions through the process on green roofs, and we wanted to show some of the intensive landscaping that's being planned at these roof areas and along the pool, such that that experience of green can be looked at down from the residence above, and also experienced at the edge of the building as you're passing through the muse. We've now flipped over to the Arlington Boulevard side, and this is the improved multi-use trail and the pass-through underneath the building. And one of the things we want to talk about is, through the GLUP processes Peter mentioned, in addition to removing the vehicles from this path, we've also worked to further, totally underground, parking within the project in this zone. And this section shows, this red line is where the grade is along the building face, and you can see the parking below, and then the apartments up a small stoop from that spot, really, I think, enhancing the overall experience and a good testament to the process and the design. Here, we're looking at similar biophilic features along the Arlington Boulevard trail enhancements, as again Peter mentioned, as part of that work with VDOT and the right-of-way. And we are looking forward to creating that grade environment that the GLUP established, and I think that the design team has continued to enhance, as well as looking at this zone that Peter highlighted, that is now pedestrian and wheels only as vehicles turn under the building. Finally, flipping around to Arlington Boulevard, looking back at the project again from the GLUP, where you see the stepping mass and some of the articulation, and then the final design, as that turned out from a little bit lower perspective, the same stepping design, obviously the transformer is removed, we've got the sign, and, you know, some of the architectural features, like the geometry of that sign, that begins to carry forward in these stepped bay articulations. So, I'm sure there'll be plenty of questions. We're thrilled to be here. It's been an incredible process, and we look forward to answering any questions. I'm going to stop sharing my screen, but happy to bring anything else up, or, and we have some additional information if there are questions. Thank you.
Thank you. The applicant has completed. Great. Madam Clerk, do we have any public speakers?
We have three speakers this evening. Our first speaker is Joan McIntyre.
Are you here for yourself or for C2E2? Then, I don't think she has a time limit. Is that correct?
Three minutes, as shown.
As for commission?
Correct.
Okay.
Yeah, good evening. I'm Joan McIntyre, Chair of the Climate Change, Energy, and Environment Commission. While the participant is participating in the green building incentive program, as with many of the projects we have reviewed, it really doesn't really come up to what we think is necessary in order to address the KINEES goal for carbon neutrality. We score this at about 58%, which again is about in line with many of the other projects we've looked at, unfortunately, here. We, as with most projects, we do focus on electrification, and at this point, the design is really continuing to call for fossil fuel for the HVAC systems and for the hot water. And, you know, without, as long as buildings continue to be built with fossil fuels, it really locks in carbon emissions for at least a decade or more to come. Now, the applicant's energy performance model actually did indicate that there were pathways to design with all-electric systems, and we would strongly encourage them to continue to pursue those options. Again, we tend to also focus on energy efficiency. They're, of course, committing to the minimum required by the green building incentive policy of 20%. Again, we would strongly encourage at least 25% or more above the ASHRAE baseline. Again, the first way of decarbonizing is reducing the amount of energy you have to use in the first place. And so, and we do think that it is possible that they can certainly get above that amount. Again, EV charging in order to help facilitate for the transition to electric vehicles, we would strongly encourage that they strive for at least 50% of spaces to be EV-charging ready. Again, they're committing to the minimum requirements. The plan does have a lot of very nice nature-based landscaping that we commend, and of course would encourage them to continue to find more room for trees on the site as they continue to develop at the landscaping design. And finally, we would also suggest that the applicant look for other opportunities to look at the material selection to reduce the carbon emissions embedded in those materials that they're selecting. Again, you know, remind people that, you know, over the last week or more, we've been dealing with excessive heat in the south, and even in our areas here, code red, code purple days because of fires, climate-related fires up in Canada. So, it really is imperative that with all new development, that these projects really actually build towards what's necessary, which is buildings that don't use carbon, don't use fossil fuels within them, are highly energy-efficient, and otherwise support a transition to decarbonized community. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Our next speaker, Madam Clerk.
Bernie Byrne is our next speaker.
Okay, Mr. Byrne. Dr. Byrne is online.
Hello? Can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you.
Yes, we can hear you. You have two minutes.
Despite what the applicant said, this project has much too little biophilia. And look at that green roof. Well, you should see a few small plant beds on the roof. There is no real green roof. The building is, the building is said to contain, not roof, contains much synthetic turf and wood decking, other things, which will cause this, this sort of motor oil. The building needs a real green roof. Now, this may be too late to do it, but it's a major deficiency. Please recommend that the County Board require the applicant to do the following. Replace all mowed lawns, including the lawn between the Arlington Boulevard bike trail and the building, with planting the native shrubs, ground covers, and perennials that was for pollinators. Between those trees is grass, mowed grass. That is no good. And applicants don't seem to recognize this. That, few are no wind-pollinated or metal grass and sedges. That's an insect was pollinated, shot four, feeding four, feed, far more pollinators. Vine should hang down from the roof and the balconies and constantly the ground and the ledge. There are no vines in that building. Plant branches for pollinators, the United, Northern Virginia. To conform with the county's monarch fledge, plant much common milkweed. This plant grows well in all sunny areas. Monarchs prefer to put, as other species. Plant come milkweed other plants in all tree trenches and sidewalks and elsewhere. Elevator plant, roll fences around the tree trenches to protect them from the plants from shrapnel and dogs. Make the public space primarily biophilic. But from the way it looks now, doesn't look as that way. The plants are for pollinators. Do not fill most with playground, bed, or fields of mowed lawns. The conceptual landscape plant for this species, for this plant project does not identify any of the shrubs, ground covers, or perennials, or the trees. Add sheets.
Your time is up, Dr. Byrne.
Add sheet to identify these. We need this information.
Thank you. Do we have any other public speakers, Madam Clerk?
Our next speaker is Anne Bodine.
Mr. Chair, can we clarify? I only have two minutes instead of three. Okay.
Yes.
You can raise the podium so that you can get the microphone closer. We can hear you then.
Anne, you're speaking for yourself, correct?
Yes. Does that work?
Two minutes.
Okay, Mr. Chair, my name is Anne Bodine. I'm from Lion Park. I oppose the recommended change to the GLUP zoning and site plan usage because, first, it's a massive addition of housing and density, and it adds 8% of our existing stock with no addition of services. Second, and my main point, it entirely overlooks that the special GLUP and the site plan are two separate processes, and both must confer community benefits. I know it was an intended revision of the special GLUP in 2008 and 2019 to segregate the two, with special GLUP preceding site plans, but not approving the special GLUP before site plan. This presents problems. It ends up bundling and burying the benefits that are separate and should accrue from two separate awards to the developer. In fact, the special GLUP booklet says that authorization of the GLUP amendment does not imply that the county board supports the proposed change, but only that it's within the realm of consideration. But here we are with ARVA at round two, and we are told that upGLUPping is a fait accompli. The draft bore report says the GLUP study concluded that if an applicant proposed a site plan in harmony with the recommendations of the special GLUP study, then a change would be appropriate. The county cannot tell residents the GLUP study isn't an approval, and community benefits can't be broached during the special GLUP study phase, only to show up in round two to tell us the die is cast. So I'm asking for a new process. I'm asking you to recommend disaggregating special GLUP from site plan and ensure we get a full slate of benefits. Looking at this project, the combined list of community benefits for both a special GLUP and a site plan for ARVA is underwhelming. Special GLUP comes with expectations of 20% of affordable housing and up to 20% tree canopy. This project has less than 5% affordable housing, even below normal site plan, and no added tree canopy in a neighborhood that has lost more canopy than any other. I'd also ask you to start showing the math for both sides' benefits. Seven affordable apartments is worth $3 million. 10,000-square-foot park is worth $2 million. We already have bike paths in this site. This is an additional minimal plus-up. If we see these a cost, we can better assess these trade-offs, and I'm asking you to do that before we go ahead with any approval here. Thank you.
Thank you. Do we have any other public speakers, Madam Clerk?
That's our last speaker for the evening.
Do we have any other commissions?
No.
Okay. This was heard before the Transportation Commission last week, and as Mr. Roberts mentioned, the Transportation Commission voted unanimously to recommend approval of the project. Our discussion involved such things as the improvement in the bike facilities, not just Arlington Boulevard, but also both sides of Pershing. Two bike rooms at ground level, so that's roll right in. That was well-received. There's also more permeability on this site with both the east-west, north-south rights-of-way going through what is essentially a superblock right now. And so it is going to be good for all users. It isn't just vehicular-oriented. It's very much pedestrian and bicycle-oriented, too. The parking ratio appears to be appropriate, and that pretty much was the discussion that we had. And as I mentioned, the vote was unanimous for the Transportation Commission. Do we have an SPRC report? Commissioner Sarley?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So this is an interesting SPRC report. So first of all, I'd like to thank Commissioner Schroll, who's no longer on the commission and is now a full-time parent, for chairing both the special GLUP study and the SPRC process. And then Commissioner Peterson took the baton from him, but she's not here tonight, so she handed me the baton, and hopefully we'll close out the race as a team here. I don't have much to add from the report that Commissioner Peterson provided for us.
Thank you. Discussion topics. Does anybody have any that they would like to raise? We have community benefits such as affordable housing. We have, I think, parks and rec issues because we have some open space here and biophilia. I mentioned transportation. Other topics that anyone would like to raise?
Yeah, I think I would just like to get a, as a topic, but I'm previewing my question, get a staff response to Ms. Bodine's concern about the special GLUP request being paired with the site plan.
Okay.
If we could talk about that.
Okay. Why don't we start then, actually, why don't we start first with the community benefits? Oh, I'm sorry, Commissioner Streiner.
Yeah, I'll add in the topic of historic preservation.
Historic preservation, yes. Good topic.
Oh, I'll just add, preservation, architecture.
Architecture. I'll combine them.
Yeah.
Great. And?
And I don't know if it falls in, I want to go circle back around Ms. McIntyre's, some of what Ms. McIntyre brought up about energy and
Energy efficiency.
Yes.
Sustainability issues.
Yes, sustainability. Thank you.
Okay.
Sorry, one more thing. Commissioner Peterson's report mentioned phasing as a neighborhood concern.
Phasing, okay. Okay, we'll hold that one up to the end. Okay, why don't we start off with affordable housing as a topic? Any comments, questions from the day? Yes, Gershon Streiner.
Yes, so I know the emphasis was on larger family-based units, and you said there were seven committed affordable units total. A mix of those is going to be two-bedroom and three-bedroom. What does that mix look like?
Sure. So I believe it's correctly stated in the staff report, so I'm going to use that to remind myself. But it is two three-bedrooms, two-bedroom-plus-dens, and then, Peter, I believe the rest is a mix of two-bedrooms and one-bedrooms after that.
Two one-bedroom-plus-den units, one two-bedroom-plus-den units, two two-bedroom-loft units, and two three-bedroom units.
That sounds correct.
Okay, so those one-bedroom-plus dens, would that accommodate a family of four or five? Is that a reasonable expectation? Or would you need more bedrooms in that case?
Well, I don't think that every single unit is designed to be directly aimed at families, but I think something that's unique in this project, that you don't tend to find in comparable ones, especially in the ADU side, is the generation of three-bedroom and the allocation of two-bedroom-plus dens. You know, we had a really great conversation about this at Lion Park at the community meeting a few months back. They really pressed us on this, and, you know, why would we include a two-bedroom-plus den? And, you know, Ashton's on the line, so he can kind of walk through some of the arithmetic of that, but also some of the design behind that. Really, you know, they're sort of a great substitute in some ways for these three-bedrooms because they give you the opportunity to have that den kind of act as sort of a substitute bedroom space. So we've tried our best to take that 20% and allocate it towards larger units on the site, and really came up with that combination in discussions with housing staff and planning staff and the Housing Commission.
Okay. And then just one more time. How many of those were the two-bedroom-plus dens? Was it?
I believe it's two, Peter.
Two.
One two-bedroom-plus-den, two two-bedroom-loft units. In condition number 41 of our site plan, just to let you know, we have requirements for occupancy of these buildings and that, or I should say, the committed affordable units, and that CAF units shall meet a minimum standard of occupancy by at least two persons, with the bedroom size being adequate for a minimum of two-person occupancy. The two-bedroom CAF units will be allowed to be occupied by at least four people.
Okay. Okay, so that makes sense then. Okay.
And are they at 60, 80%? What level affordability are we talking about?
They'll be 60% AMI.
60% AMI, thank you.
As a rental unit, the county policy is 60% AMI over 30.
And these units, are they in addition to or in lieu of the base contribution?
In addition to.
In addition. Thank you. Any other questions, comments on affordable housing? Okay. Jumping around, why do we move on to sustainability? One question I had is, are there going to be any gas connections to the building, natural gas connections, or is it going to be all-electric?
Ashton, do you mind chiming in on that one?
Sure. There will be gas connections. As C2E2 pointed out, there is some gas service within the building. There's gas for the emergency generator. There's gas for hot water, and there is gas for some DOAS reheat, which actually, in the energy analysis, resulted in less of a carbon footprint than an electric reheat in that analysis. But I'll pull up just kind of a quick side summarizing some of the general features, you know, with the way that we're getting to the 20% energy savings, and then kind of pull up, I think, one of the questions about, you know, there is, within the DOAS, the heat pump DOAS, that there is a gas reheat, which really operates at extreme temperatures. And in that analysis, we actually determined that we were getting a better carbon footprint performance from that gas reheat, which is why that's there rather than an electric reheat. Another question that came up there, since I have the screen up, is about electric vehicles. And one of the things that the team looked to do thinking forward is actually provide additional space within the electric vault. So this is a detailed drawing of the, from the site plan set. And you can see that we've got a switch and two transformers and essentially additional vault space. So as that, as demands meet, that can be accommodated without, you know, extreme changes to the plan. So in additional, in addition to kind of the standard electric-ready, the whole building is sort of electric-upsize-ready. I'll stop sharing and can you have some more questions?
Thank you. For the bicycle room, is it, are you going to be able to have electric bikes charged in the bike rooms?
That's a detail that we talked about at Transportation Commission, and it's not one that we have formalized, but I think it's an aspiration. And certainly, the, you know, the two bike rooms have different identities. There's a larger bike room that's closer to the public space park that has room to accommodate things like cargo bikes and larger scooters. And I think the intent is that that area is being, could service those things, and that'll be part of that design process. But it's not in the plans today, but it is something we're planning on doing.
Thank you. Commissioner Bagley?
Yep. So what I'm hearing is that you are, you will have, or you feel confident that you can have adequate EV chargers, whether it's now or moving forward, is what I'm hearing. Okay. And also that you feel that your choices on some of the gas and the fossil fuel things you feel are as good as they can be for the carbon footprint? Is that what I'm hearing?
Yeah, some of those choices.
Go ahead, Ashton.
Okay.
That's right. Yeah, some of those choices, particularly the gas reheat, were better energy use and carbon footprint choices at this point.
Okay. And to the question about the carbon emissions in the materials, now that's one I haven't really heard so much, but now I guess we're going to have to add that to our list. So what is your reaction to that?
I think that's a great comment to bring up and something that we're certainly tracking. The carbon, one of the things is thinking about the base structure material and how do you use carbon sequestration in things like concrete construction, which, again, here, the project is looking not to be a short-term project, but a long-term viable building that will last many, many years, more than a, I'll call it a stick-built wood construction that you see happening all over. There are also elements in the materials like brick and finding the ways that those are brought from close by and that those are done in ways that have lower carbon footprints are things that certainly, as thoughtful designers, we talk about and think about a lot, and think it's appropriate to be talking about it in this forum. And it's something that, you know, we don't have metrics for that today, but certainly our criteria that we, as thoughtful designers and thoughtful developers, are looking to advance.
So what I'm hearing is that you are considering this, or you will consider this as the project moves forward?
Right, and have considered it in the materials that you've seen on the renderings to date.
Okay. And in going back to Dr. Byrne's comments about the green roofs, can you show the slides again? That, are they just green patches that have been added to that? Or, I mean, my idea of a green roof is a green roof. So can you go back and show what that is?
Sure. And I'm going to start, I'm going to actually start with a different slide that I think is, to me, actually one of the most powerful visuals on the project and most meaningful to me as an architect moving through this design, is really the massive transformation for this project is taking a car-focused site that's really heavily paved and transforming that into a site that is heavily landscaped and heavily planted. You know, taking impermeable area and transitioning it to permeable area, you know, this park easement zone, the design team has worked very hard to remove all garages or any structure below it so that that land can really percolate and have thriving landscape within it. You know, the, so with that, I'll kind of jump back to, you know, a couple slides. You know, there is green within the roof and kind of intensive planting as we're looking at it. This is a slide that you have not seen. This is a roof terrace that is on the corner of Pershing Drive and Arlington Boulevard. That's taking advantage of great views back to the city, but there's planting up here. In addition to, I'm going to scoot a few slides back to the planting at the pool deck. The fundamental point is that the project site is being used for percolation and stormwater management because there is so much site and it's being converted back into permeable land. So the actual stormwater management of green roof on the building is not something that is required for what we need to kind of elevate that stature. So in that light, the planting on the building can serve a more directly biophilic function rather than a kind of stormwater technical function. So it allows some more flexibility. Did that address your question?
Yeah, I applaud the addition of green. I'm just not sure I would qualify it as a green roof in the sense that we're used to a green roof kind of idea.
That's correct.
Yes, so you may want to
It's a different kind of green roof.
Yeah, you may want to spell out what the difference is. Thank you.
Okay. Do we have any other comments on sustainability issues? And we moved, since we started moving into biophilia, too. Commissioner Burkey?
I just want to revisit the EV capability, and I appreciate the information. So Ms. McIntyre had said that E2C2, I don't know if you formally recommended, but had made a request for 50% of the spaces to be EV charging-ready. Is that, I'm just, and I'm going to claim some ignorance here, is that something that's been done? I'm really not sure what, Ms. McIntyre, if you want to comment, I'm not really sure what the baseline is. I know we, you know, we look at some limited capability, but I wasn't, I didn't hear it 50%, which would be aggressive and I'm not opposed to, but, I don't know. Does anybody, can anybody provide context to that? If you want to?
I'm sorry.
Oh, she's not allowed to?
Yes, staff needs to answer the question.
Okay, maybe staff can answer then.
For the level of lead bonus that they're requesting, the baseline standard recommendation that's in our standard conditions is they have to have park at least 4% of the current spaces and be ready for 15%. So that's at this level. I can't speak to any higher levels, but at the level they're claiming.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, Commissioner Sarley?
I have a question. For my identification, let's put it that way. How can it be that a fuel or fossil fuel is, has a smaller carbon footprint than the electrification? Is that like a time snippet that we're getting? Like, how does that report? That seems counterintuitive, I guess, is what I'm trying to say. So I'd love to have a little clarification on how we go to fossil fuels and we still have a smaller carbon footprint than the electrification of the building. Is that because of the current standards of the way electricity is provided? Is that a calculation based on historic fossil fuel consumption?
I can answer that.
Thanks.
It really is about where the electric is coming from, from the grid and the region. So it is based on, you know, it is a time snap, as in it is the reality of where the electricity is coming from. It really is about where the electric is coming from, from the grid and the region. So it is based on, you know, it is a time snap as in it is the reality of where the electricity is coming from. And, and it's based on that analysis. And we can connect offline if you want to talk further about that, that energy model report. And we can bring in our, our friends at Sustainable Building Partners that can, can explain a lot. But it's, it frankly, that analysis surprised us and it is a particularity of this site. But, because normally we would, we would have, it would have made sense to do electric, although the analysis proved out that this was a, this was a different, different beast.
Thank you.
For that, let me do a little follow-up on Commissioner Sarley's question. It struck me that it was more for heat in extreme situations that gas would kick in because essentially doing resistance heating from electricity is just really inefficient. But does this, so, so is that correct?
That's correct.
You're saying, but you're also using it for hot water. And I understand.
No, that's, yes, gas is also being used for hot water and that's generally a market condition of what is, what is available and practical.
Is there a way that down the road, we will be able to convert to electric for hot water? You know, because technically that should be changing as, as advances happen?
Yes. The way that the central plant is being set up is one that could be replaced with all electric equipment. And that's been something that we talked about in SPRC and I think is, is something that the, the plan, the design plan is considering.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions on sustainability? Okay, moving into biophilia, which we started touching on, is there anything for, oh, this is mostly residential building. I noticed you actually have a lot of brick. It's not an all-glass building, which is nice to see. Do we have bird-friendly glass for those, glass for the windows that are there? How are we, how are we dealing with that?
Yes, we are providing bird-friendly glass for, you know, the, the zone that's talked about in the code. I believe it's 32 feet to eight feet. The only exception to that zone is the portion of the plan that is recreating the historic lobby, that that glass is to be focused on recreating that historic element. And so that would not have the, the bird-friendly additions to it, which would change the aesthetic.
Right. And I could understand that from an HLRB's viewpoint, but is there some way that the glass itself, even though it's historic, could have something on it? You know, sometimes there's appliques even that people put on, on those sort of things so a bird doesn't smash into it. Because it'll almost be a light beacon during the, in the evening, you know, it's going to be well-lit because it's a lobby. The fear is that would end up being a, a bird magnet during migration season.
I think that's certainly something that the, the team would consider. I, I think what our design experience has been, the invisible or UV bird protections are, are much more visible than I think everyone would hope. And we're, you know, we're looking forward to that technology continuing to improve and certainly consider.
Okay, thank you.
I'll associate myself with Commissioner Lantelme sentiment. And I'm hoping that HLRB and the DRC can see that like a light or discreet fritting pattern, you know, is acceptable within the historic preservation context.
Let's see, trees. We actually, you know, trees, tree replacement. I have been on the site and you're right, it is just an asphalt, is 90% asphalt, at least appears that way. It's quite, quite unattractive, but there are some trees. What, how are you, what is your landscaping plan? How many trees will be added to the site? And are there any that actually can be preserved? Or should?
I'm going to let Gabriella Kettmar from Land Design answer that. Thank you.
Hi, can you hear me? Good evening. And I apologize, I'm on candlelight, my overhead light bulb just blew a few hours, a few minutes ago. If you can all hear me, let me clarify, I do have some numbers for you all to clarify the question about the tree canopy on site. As inventoried by our civil engineer and the team, there are 72 trees that exist on the site today, despite how bleak the image that Ashton shared a few minutes ago. Of those, 28 have to be removed because they have been deemed unhealthy and in, or in We are proposing 69 trees currently on the site. And so that is a surplus from what it is out there today with healthy new trees with vigorous growths. That is the math. Hopefully that makes some sense. There are, the trees that exist along Route 50, they are pair, repair trees, they'll have to be replaced ultimately. We had intended to preserve, but they're not in good, in good condition, plus they're not a desirable sort of street tree. So we want something that is safer, that has a better tree branch pattern and structure for the, for all the cyclists that go, that will go under and between the two rows of trees that we're providing, or proposing rather. I hope that answers the question.
Yes, thank you. Any further questions on Commissioner Sarley?
Sorry, I have a small editorial and it just came up. I appreciate Ashton's comment that this is a significant improvement to the existing condition and undoubtedly that is a fact, but you know, we still have to aspire, right? So it's clearly an improvement, but the bar is so low to begin with. I think that's like a slightly unfair comparison. I just wanted to quickly react to that. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Sarley. The park space, has that, how will that be planned out? What sort of process will there be for, how that will be used? What will it look like?
The version of the condition you're in is not the finalized version that County Board is eventually going to see, but essentially it'll be like other planning processes where the DPR and the developer will go over a list of consultants. They'll choose a consultant, they'll start a process as soon as, as soon as a civil engineering plan, when they need to submit a civil engineering plan, they will, there's a time limit on the process. There are generally two or three community meetings that DPR will lead. And then the goal is to have the design of the space and it's, you know, it's only 10,000 square feet, so it should go relatively smoothly to have that by the time that the developer has to submit their final landscape plan and final civil engineering plan to be constructed at the same time as the building. There will be however, I should mention, a condition, a condition that in the event that the Department of Parks and Recreation does not have the capacity to lead a public review process, the developer could actually cash out. But I think everybody's preference is that they do it at the time that the, but one important part of the special GLUP study was that the Department of Parks and Recreation said that they, they wanted to take the lead on the process. And that's, so that's why we did not plan it during the SPRC process.
Thank you. You will then also reach out to Lion Park Civil Association and the apartment buildings to the south.
Oh, yes. This will be led by the Department of Parks and Recreation, so I don't want to, I will say, yes, they will. They will reach out to the community surrounding this site to help plan it, yes.
Okay, thank you. Other questions on parks and rec, trees, biophilia, transportation? Any further comments on that? Commissioner Bagley?
I'm not sure if this is the appropriate time to ask this, but where will, when construction begins, where will trucks go, not go, not be allowed? There's always a construction liaison. And as a former Civic Association president, it would be very helpful to make sure that whoever the liaison is really is made aware of all the things that have happened up until they're on the ground with the development. A lot of times, what has been discussed sometimes isn't always relayed to them. And is, now, is this going to also be pile driving at all?
Ashton, I don't know if you can bring up the, I'm sorry, the site circulation slide for our, for construction?
Yes, I can. And I can also mention that from the pile driving standpoint, no, the, the plan here is that this is a, a more conventional foundation and not on piles.
Good. Well, I'm sure the neighbors will be happy about that. I would just, my question is, or sort of my observation and my hope with all of this is when, assuming this is approved, that there is still tremendous conversation going on. Because I remember sitting through the initial GLUP meetings where the neighbors were seemingly much more involved and perhaps through the process, they feel as though their concerns have been met, or maybe they gave up, I don't know. But especially for the neighbors who are closest by, that communication is ongoing with them and should, everybody should know in advance how you're going to get stuff around and, and all of a sudden trucks are going any other way because it's a path of least resistance. And just from a good neighbor's standpoint, I hope that this message is delivered down the line because we're all sitting here now, but the folks who are on the ground, they haven't heard any of this stuff.
Sure. No, I mean, the, the community outreach has been an absolute for us. From almost right after the special GLUP study got approved, we were back out with the community in virtual meetings. We've held, I mean, it's, Ashton, you can correct me here, but it's at least three, if not four, meetings just with them specifically in addition to the, you know, the SPRC and so forth. So having that communication, having that level of direct connection has been an absolute must for us. You're, you're absolutely correct, we will have a liaison. I think one of the things I've personally stressed to, to the community is that, you know, in the projects where, nothing's ever perfect, where things go wrong, you need to make sure that you've got a mechanism in place. I think one of the biggest things I've seen in projects, when something does go wrong, you know, someone from the construction team parking where they're not supposed to, it does happen. The best thing you can have is, you know, a direct point of contact, somebody you know is going to be responsive. And, you know, I think NAN has shown a, an absolute commitment to that throughout this process, you know, being available, having questions answered. I mean, that's something we will absolutely be carrying forward. In terms of your question about hauling route, this is the preliminary draft of the hauling route, certainly subject to change, you know, in discussion with staff and as our plan's going to prove, but at least as a preliminary matter, the idea is to bring trucks off of Arlington Boulevard, down Washington Boulevard, up Pershing, into, out of the site, back down Arlington Boulevard and head out towards the dump. So at present, that seems to be the most efficient route. We did hear some concerns from the community about where trucks will park and things such as that. And so, you know, it's a, it's, it's something we have to continue to think through and we'll certainly, you know, be open to their input on all those fronts.
That really is phasing, but that's okay because that was one of our topics. Anything further on phasing?
Parking.
But yeah, we're back to transportation then, so.
Yeah.
Commissioner Sarley?
I just had a clarifying question. Staff highlighted this, that southern peninsula at the end of the mew, that the car is going away from that corner. So is that programmatically changing? Is that no longer garage? What becomes of that space? I'm just trying to understand a little better.
There's no longer car parking in that space and I'll let the. Sure. I mean, Ashton can speak more eloquently to it than I will be able to, but essentially what we did was push the garage down below, you know, the, the area of the, of the units. So essentially now you have the units and the muse sort of matching up in terms of where pedestrians and bicyclists can come through that area. There won't be cars and conflicts. Originally, the idea was that we were going to have cars making sort of a right turn into that southern leg. That's been eliminated. All of those turns will now occur internally within the garage.
So did the units above gain a floor down?
Ashton, you want to, there it is. Yeah, Ashton.
Units, yeah. The units above essentially grew. The, the parking did not move an entire level, it moved more, you know, closer to the order of four feet. The, you know, the, it was not a significant drop in parking, but it was significant in terms of its relationship to grade and the relationship between the muse connection as it passed through the building. In order to make that work, you could see these small dimensions, which you might not be able to read, but there are some very tight sections that, you know, as we get into the detailed design and executing this project are going to be challenging, but I think what we heard is that the, you know, the benefits were significant. We, we saw were, were significant enough to go through, to go through the effort to really make this work, so.
Great.
Thank you.
Why don't we then move into historic preservation and architecture? Commissioner Strainer?
Yes, this is a more, a more aesthetic question. I noticed that at the beginning of the presentation, there was a real emphasis on the mid-century modern architecture style. But as we're looking at the renderings, I, there just seemed to be a lack of color in it. And again, this is more aesthetic, but if there's a way that you can rope in maybe some of the original colors from the original sign into the building design, I think that might be a way to kind of spruce it up a little bit, make it look a little more aesthetically pleasing in the neighborhood. Not the most important topic, but still worth bringing up.
Certainly, that type of aesthetic was a conversation in many SPRCs and that, the kind of mid-century aspect and taking certain components and materiality for the neighborhood was the, you know, the origin of the architecture that you see, but I appreciate the comment.
Yeah, Commissioner Sarley?
I'll just quickly associate myself with that concern, you know, and anything that you can do, the Googie sort of sign is very playful and fun and the building has sort of a serious sort of quality to it, which, you know, it's not bad by any measure, but you know, there is a little bit of a, of a, almost dissonance on that. And I will say that aesthetics is a very important issue. It's tied to longevity of, you know, and health, much like biophilia, so it's a very important topic.
Thank you. Other questions, comments? Yes, Madam Clerk?
Excuse me, if I could ask you all as you're speaking to pull the mics a little bit closer to you, we're having a hard time hearing down here on this end. Thank you.
We will do that.
Thank you.
Again, any other questions, comments on architecture and historic preservation? This did go through HLRB and they were comfortable with the reconstruction or recreation of the sign. Is that correct?
It didn't formally go to the HLRB.
Oh, really?
It did go to.
No, I don't believe we were ever formally invited to HLRB, but we did have HLRB present at SPRC and we've had extensive conversations with historic preservation staff. I mean, the reality of the situation is, you know, we had a structural engineer who, you know, has actually been recommended to me through other folks at the county, you know, someone that they trust. And we had this individual and their company go out there and survey, you know, the signs, survey the lobby and basically figure out, is this something that can be saved? I mean, I think the report, which has been shared, it's online, you know, happy to provide it, pretty much speaks for itself though. It's, it's just not, just due to age and natural weathering conditions and so forth, it's just not in the, in the shape that can be saved unfortunately. So what we've kind of said along the way is we're going to pay homage to that and I think we've done a very good job of that.
Yeah, thank you. The SPRC did fully explore that as I recall. Thank you.
I do recall that too.
Very good. The special GLUP study issue, that's something that really is larger than this process, this particular thing. So I'm not sure I really think it's appropriate for us to get into that, though I would ask Mr. Pfeiffer if you would mind sort of explaining the relationship between a special GLUP study and then the SPRC afterward.
Okay, as my microphone is intermittently working, I apologize for the, for the brief pause there. So the special GLUP study is, you can think about it as a site-specific, almost area plan that is requested by the developer. And so we went through that process, you know, Commissioner Lantelme, I know you were extensively involved in that a couple of years ago. At the conclusion of that, as Mr. Schultz mentioned, the board adopted a GLUP study booklet, which provides recommendations and discussed the, the process, as well as they advertised the change in the general land use plan designation for the site, with the intention that the site plan that you all are acting on this evening would be in conformance to that GLUP study booklet and then implement the recommendations of the GLUP study. So specifically with respect to community benefits, I think, given the fact that, you know, when we do these GLUP studies, it's assumed that they'll be implemented by site plan. And so many of the infrastructure and improvements, open space, transportation improvements, things of that nature, housing are contemplated as part of that GLUP study, right? And so that when a site plan comes in, the, the way that they would earn additional density would be by implementing those recommendations from the. would be by implementing those recommendations from the GLUP study. Now, there are other things, of course, we have an UP GLUP contribution, which you all have heard about this evening as well, and so that, that as well is coming forward with the site plan, and that captures the delta between the existing density through the existing GLUP designation and then what is proposed. So that's, that's essentially the way we view the relation between the site plan and the GLUP study.
Thank you very much. Yes, Commissioner Bagley?
So if, if we move forward, excuse me, with this tonight, this wouldn't be precedent-setting for any future if there's a GLUP study that's out there and there's a site plan that comes in, and the neighbors are like, this is what we went through for all these days, nights, weekends, and everything else, and there's no departures, right? So this wouldn't be precedent-setting?
No, this is very consistent with almost every other GLUP study we've done, to the extent that there are any deviations. Mr. Schultz, I think, has explained those and why staff is in support.
Thank you. Any other comments, questions? Before we go for motions, I do want to say, I was, as people mentioned, present through both the special GLUP study and then all the SPRCs. The, I do want to commend the staff, the developers, for how closely they did work with Lion Park, which did participate in, at every phase, every meeting, they were there and they were vocal. And it was people who weren't just at the far end of Lion Park either, it was people who were right there. So, you know, they're, they were very much involved, their input was, was heard and responded to. So I think that this project did evolve in response to that community process, and, you know, I, I personally am very comfortable with where we are right now and how we've, how far we've come for this. So, you know, I think this is, this is where I think the process did in fact work quite nicely. I, at this point, will invite a motion.
Great, thank you, Mr. Chair. We have three motions on this project, so I will begin. Can you hear me okay?
One point, should we combine all three into one vote, or should they be separate votes for this? Do we have any idea?
I would recommend that we do three separate motions.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, I will begin. I move that the PC recommend that the County Board adopt the attached resolution to approve the general land use plan amendment to change the designation from service, commercial, and low, medium residential to low, office, apartment, hotel for the area located at the southern corner of Arlington Boulevard in North Pershing Drive.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Commissioner Striner, thank you. Okay, do we have, anybody want to speak to the motion, comments? Okay, let's take the vote. Commissioner Bagley?
Aye.
Commissioner Guevara?
Aye.
Commissioner Burkey?
Aye.
Commissioner Sarley?
Aye.
Commissioner Striner?
Aye.
Commissioner Robinson?
Aye.
Commissioner Weir?
Aye.
And I vote aye as well, it's unanimous. Do we have any further motions?
Yes, I have a second motion. I move that the Planning Commission recommend that the County Board adopt the attached ordinance to rezone the property known as 2201 Arlington Boulevard, RPC number 18-059-020, and to update the Arlington County zoning ordinance map 13-1 to amend lines A and B to encompass the property.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Commissioner Robinson? Thank you. Anybody want to speak to the motion? Take a vote. Commissioner Bagley?
Aye.
Commissioner Guevara?
Aye.
Commissioner Burkey?
Aye.
Commissioner Sarley?
Aye.
Commissioner Striner?
Aye.
Commissioner Robinson?
Aye.
Commissioner Weir?
Aye.
And I vote aye as well, it is unanimous. Do we have any further motions?
Yes, there's a third and final motion for the evening. I move that the Planning Commission recommend that the County Board adopt the attached ordinance for SPLN 22-00006, SB number 469, to permit an eight-story mixed-use building with approximately 251 dwelling units and approximately 3,000 square feet of retail or retail equivalent use, with modifications of zoning ordinance requirements including additional density, reduced residential and retail parking ratios, signs, and other modifications as necessary to achieve the proposed development plan, subject to the conditions of the attached ordinance.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Commissioner Bagley, thank you. And does anybody care to speak to the motion? And let's go ahead with the vote. Commissioner Bagley?
Aye.
Commissioner Guevara?
Aye.
Commissioner Burkey?
Aye.
Commissioner Sarley?
Aye.
Commissioner Striner?
Aye.
Commissioner Robinson?
Aye.
Commissioner Weir?
Aye.
And I vote aye as well, it is unanimous. The matter is passed and completed. Thank you all very much. Thank you, staff and applicants. Go forth and prosper.
Thank you all very much for your time.
Yeah, what would comment?
I would just like to thank the Lion Park community, Mr. Schultz, and thank you for your time tonight. I've learned a lot through this process, and I just, I think it's been, you guys have a wonderful team, and it's been, it's been a joy to work with, so thank you so much.
Good to hear, thank you. Good, good. Madam Clerk, do we have anything further tonight?
But to recess.
That's right, okay, very good. Again, as I mentioned earlier, we will be continuing this meeting after a recess, but we will continue this Thursday, July 6th, at 7:00 PM. So I want to thank all the staff, I want, Madam Clerk, thank you, everyone else who is here, who helped make this happen, and with this, our committee is in, our commission is in recess.